Great idea, and I think we will have that for the next.
Additional insight is helpful, I think, for us.
We'll have that for the next board meeting to say.
To support the administrative decision, because we definitely want to do that.
Right.
Any other discussion on optimum classroom size?
I mean, I think it's a bigger topic than we're probably not going to exhaust today.
But the district will come back.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good topic for us to spend some.
We can have that before the April 18th meeting.
And that would be terrific. It sounded like a really big topic to me with the research.
Not the optimum class size, it's the plan for the portables.
That's an AIC.
Yes, that's.
Oh, I was going to say, we can wait till the fall.
I was thinking the same thing. I think they're biting off the big.
We're looking at balance.
So my only sense of urgency on the big picture class size discussion is the impact it has on the budget and forecasting that we might want to do to help the city with their planning process and to help the community sort of start to sort issues out as to, you know, what's important in the community. And yeah, that's to me like a summer/fall discussion. It's not something we have ready before we approve this budget.
Correct.
We'll have a plan for the portables, and again, they will come back so we can have further discussion on optimum class size.
Makes sense.
Maybe it are retrieved. Yes, maybe it are retrieved.
So I don't know if we're going through page by page, because we've been talking about regular instruction.
However you want to answer questions.
I just wanted to have a brief conversation about something we discussed kind of when I met with you one-on-one, really to see what the rest of the board thinks. It's my understanding that the, so if you do a step, you get a step. If you're not do a step, you're going to get a lump sum. So a stipend in lieu of COLA. Your base will not escalate next fiscal year. And I'm fully, I'm highly supportive of that, even though we haven't had a COLA in a while, because from my perspective, we're keeping our options open. And so I had brought up the idea of kind of a comprehensive salary review, looking at what other people are doing. There's, I guess the vast majority of the country is on a salary schedule that looks a lot like ours, educational lanes and steps. But there are a number, a large number of districts, a large minority, that are doing other things. And the big conversation is, should I include performance as part of your calculation of compensation? And I don't have a firmly held opinion one way or the other on that. But my point would be that something like thirty, thirty-something million of our forty-something million dollar budget is salary. And before we do a COLA, which I wouldn't be shocked to see the staff come and recommend a COLA next fiscal year, before we do a COLA, let's kind of have that conversation and settle in on what's the most effective way to use the biggest tool that we have in our toolbox, which is the salaries that we pay everybody.
And so are you talking about seventeen, eighteen?
I'm talking about during this upcoming fiscal year.
Having something.
Doing a really.
For seventeen, eighteen.
Deep look at what are other people doing? What do we want to do? What are we trying to accomplish? And even winding up with a summary statement that we could share with potential teachers. You know, our strategy from a salary standpoint is, a lot of companies say we want to be in the upper half of compensation. Some companies say we want to be among the top quintile. Governor Haslam said we want to be the fastest growing state in the union when it comes to teacher salaries. We might say we want to ensure that our compensation package enables us to put an excellent teacher in every classroom. I don't know what that statement is, but, and maybe teachers, maybe brand-new graduates don't think this way. But as a brand-new graduate, it would be, it might be comforting to me to know this is how they look at salary. Because you can show me what you're paying today. What's your plan for how that's going to evolve as my career unfolds? Because teaching is, in general, a little bit less, what's it called? It's not migratory. But teachers tend to stay with the district a lot longer than private sector employees.
Turnover, less turnover.
Do they not?
I heard a different noise. What's the question? Turnovers, states, longevity of teachers.
Teachers tend to stay with the district a lot longer than private sector employees tend to stay with the private sector employee, or?
I don't, I can't speak for the private sector. I just know within the first five years, there's a lot of people leaving education. I can't speak for GMSD.
For six years.
Maybe I'm wrong about that. Yeah. There's been a drastic decrease in the teacher pool since we added all this testing to teacher schedules. We hear a lot about teacher morale in the schools, the challenges that teachers are facing from state mandates. I think teaching as a profession is not what it was, and it's not drawing the pool that we have.
I think one of the challenges that Mr. Haddow has is, elementary school teachers, we can get elementary school teachers, but when you're talking about someone with a four-year science degree or a four-year math degree, and on top of that, a master's to then teach, finding math teachers in those hard-fill areas is not common. So we are seeing a lot of people leaving.
I do want to do what Trace had said on some of the benefit of being a teacher or anybody now in that role of work, apparently, as time is a commodity and this work-life balance and amount of hours people are putting in. So I'd like to really revisit something that I think would have a big benefit for teachers in that with being early out. Most, some schools, a lot of schools are going to that because it allows for that true collaborative time where it's not a shotgun. It may be, it may not be, hey, this came up, and I have to go take care of this. But it's really looking at the data and trying to figure out how to move kids based on what the data say. So if you look at, I'd really like that model. So being early out, and then you'd say, hey, what's the cost of that? And the cost would be the running buses a little bit earlier, picking up kids and/or having Project Reach serve kids at an earlier time. So hypothetically, let's say it was an eight-to-three school. Early out would be two o'clock, and you do that maybe every other Wednesday. And I think you would have a work-life balance effect that, I don't know what the price would be to that. But you'd also have a student data assessment of people really collaborating on, hey, how do you move kids and keep kids on tier one? Or how do you move kids and enrich kids that need to be enriched? I think that that's, I may be digressing.
And we'll be glad to do.
I like what Denver.
What else is? We'll be glad to do an analysis.
I like what Denver Public Schools has set up. What they have set up is you're paying people for their time to become a better professional, from my understanding of it. But what I want to do with that, Ken, is, that is one of my own personal goals, is you know, well, as climate, the strategic plan, employee pay, honoring effective, to highly effective teachers. How do you make that work? That would be, so I honor that, hey, we need to take a look at that point in seventeen, eighteen.
Well, one of the things I shared with the superintendent prior to it was, okay, so I don't have the data. There's lots of noise. There's been a bazillion studies. There's probably not a consensus in the education community about this is the way to do it. But as a layperson, it doesn't feel right to me that the best, most effective teacher in the school makes the same money as the teacher that's marginal. That doesn't feel right to me as a non-educator. Now, I don't know if that's, if that's wrong, and that is how it should be. Or in Denver, they do try and add, not exclusively, but they try and introduce a component of differentiated pay. And I don't believe that teachers teach harder because there's a bonus hanging out there. I think that teaching, great teachers, is more of a calling than anything else. But there's that, you know, what is right kind of question for me. Your point about high school, the difficulty in attracting high school teachers, particularly where hard-to-staff positions.
Yes.
Is SPED at all levels or mostly high school? Hard-to-staff?
What you're seeing, well, because of the change in the licensure, is that middle school specialist now is going to be a math or English or content area specialist. So it's going to trickle down to a different grade level, grade level.
In the marketplace, when supply is, when there's a greater demand than there is supply, the price of that commodity goes up. Does that need to happen for some of these hard-to-staff positions? Do we need to build a pipeline where we can grow our own math and science, high school math and science teachers? But as much of that as possible that we could roll into a comprehensive review of, here's how we're going to approach salary going forward, and you'll have a half million dollars or so of seed money to start funding that transition.
So right now, for further discussion for the 2017, eighteen years optimum class size salary review and early out for POC meetings, three things to look at next year.
And I think salary, you might want to just say overall compensation, which I think is what you meant, because I think we should look at.
Compensation strategy, that's how we.
Right. Performance, we should look at, you know, what other benefits can we give teachers? Also, I would be a big fan of, you know, in those hard-to-fill areas, or if we have a teacher we know is really great and we want to go get him, let's put incentive structure in place that we can go get that teacher. Because I think probably today, you probably don't have that freedom.
Well, we had some good discussions of the benefits committee meetings to some.
Yeah, some of those ideas, because I think.
For a 3B contribution.
Let's take away the handcuffs and let Mr. Haddow go and recruit great teachers if that's what he needs.
Okay. The budget, the draft budget has an OPEB contribution in it. And I must not, I might not have been paying close attention. You guys said something about the OPEB, the committee that's meeting on OPEB alternatives.
But we, you don't.
Go ahead.
I'm part of the committee. We had a great session the other day where we went through, looked at four different main options as to how to adjust the OPEB cost. And one of the things that, we're still looking at different options, but one of the things I think was important to the group is make sure we do not impact those teachers who are close to retirement. So I think that's something that the group felt very strongly about. And while there's still a lot of work, because I think there were, as Mr. Haddow said, there were several options the group wanted to see, I think the feeling was the price tag that's in the budget, which I think is roughly $692,000, was going to be sufficient to meet the different options that the group was looking at. And so I think that was probably where this number came from. That doesn't mean it couldn't change, right? As we go back and look at other options, it may go up, it may go down, but I think that was a number that was pretty sufficient to meet the needs of what the group, what the options are likely to come back with. And it's even really on the high side. So I think it's more likely that that arc number might be less than more. And, you know, it's kind of hard to say until the group brings recommendations, until the board discusses and goes, but that's kind of where the committee is.
My question was, is approving this budget tantamount to approving an OPEB reform plan? And what I think I heard you say was, there will be multiple, there are multiple alternatives still under consideration. Has the committee talked about what you would bring to the board? You bring an answer or alternatives?
So we had some discussion at the last meeting. I think the last meeting was to bring several alternatives that we, the discussion was to bring several alternatives that was looked at by the committee with a recommendation as to this is what the committee thinks we should, to the extent that there's consensus. If there's not, then it might be, these are the two options for the board to consider.
When do you bring that recommendation?
It's really dependent on how long it takes for the actuarial. And Mr. Jones, you may have an answer.
We're hoping for, you know, in a couple of weeks, we should.
I mean, we were hoping, yeah, as, to turn that quickly and get together back in early May.
Tighter and tighter and tighter, because we started out, I think, with eight different, widely different options, and now it has become narrowed. I have the same trouble. It has become really narrowed down once you agree to.
Ken, what I would say is, you know, this dollar amount, does it make the decision no? Will it, are there higher-cost options that it will, I don't want to say eliminate, but will we have to adjust the budget? The answer would be yes. But I think there's a range of options that fit within that that the board can choose.
So the big thing to me is that the board sees more than one option. And a recommendation is great, that the committee thinks this is the best choice, but that the board see more than one choice, and that the board actually approve the OPEB plan and not just say, well, the money's been put in the budget, this is what we're going to do. And it sounds like that's exactly what's going to happen, so I was just trying to clarify that.
I think that's the intent.
Yes.
What we talked about last meeting. Questions?
Any other questions concerning the budget?
So I have a couple that I think we talked about, and you guys are going to get some answers to.
Sure.
We went through quickly. So page 10, there's this, this charges for services, this is in the revenue. There's a account, receipts from individuals, and we got $88,000 in that for 2015. We had nothing budgeted for '16 and nothing for '17. I was just, I think, trying to understand what that dollar amount is. I think you guys were going to kind of.
Yeah. I'm going to look at the work plans.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'm going to look at the email on the cabinet. I'll just give it in detail.
I didn't know if this was classroom rental or I just, seems like a big number to have gone away from '15 to '16, then '16 to '17.
Looks like back in 14, 15, it was being used for reimbursements for substitute pay.
So this would be when a school organization goes on a field trip and the sponsor goes, they reimburse for substitutes, is that?
Right. And that's being used, I believe, with a different calendar now.
So it's just a reallocation of that.
How big was that number?
Eighty-eight thousand, that seems like a lot of substitutes.
Is that, as best you can tell, Mr. Jones, is that all of what it's used for?
There's some stipends, reimbursement.
And I only ask because that would be about nine hundred, eight hundred, eight hundred, a little over, more or less eight hundred sub days.
About a hundred, ten dollars a day.
Is our total 117, and the sub gets a hundred and a half?
It's basically a labor cost, plant managers, like overtime.
Okay, so it's more than just field trip subs or?
So if someone leases, leases, uses our space, I think they have to pay for the cost of the manager being there. Is that where that's going?
No, that's what I'm saying. This money is, Mr. Jones has reallocated, he's put those amounts into different accounts. So I think he's not recommending using.
Which is fine, I was, you know where it appears on the revenue.
So it was in the wrong account number, or it's in the right account.
Or several things that are probably going out to different accounts.
Different places.
To the extent that it is somebody reimbursing us for the cost of a sub based on a club or athletic team, does that decrease the line in sub expenditures?
Well, that's what I was going to mention, is that I believe some of it has been in the past accounted for in miscellaneous refunds, and we have changed that, let's say, within the past couple of months where we're actually crediting the expense.
Okay.
So that's why.
So it's a contra expense item rather than a revenue item.
So that our expenses are accurate on our books, and then the expenses are accurate on the school's books, they're not duplicating.
This is a new one. I didn't ask this the other day.
Okay.
I sort of did. Thirty-nine, nine hundred on page 18, regular instruction program, other contracted services. Is that where we find the cost of substitutes?
Yes.
So there's more than just the cost of substitutes in there.
The Chinese.
Chinese teachers.
Yeah, university students.
How much of that is subs? Okay. And the $500,000 budget for substitutes, that, to the best of our ability, that would not include the need for substitutes that is driven by a club or an athletic team that is going to reimburse us for the cost of the sub.
We have made that change in accounting.
To the best of our ability.
Yes.
What about if the teacher is out for PD, professional development, going to a seminar?
Or approved, we pick up the cost.
So there's some school budget that, and then there's other that we don't ask the principal to pay for.
Correct.
Any feel for how big the board-approved component is? By other words, how much of the 500 is sick days?
I'm working on that now. I'll give you a, for instance, in the month of January through March, and I'll give you a, for instance, and it's not what you're asking, but FMLA, Dogwood alone, there was probably about, I think, January through March, you're looking, I'm looking at the heights of what's going on, it's a differential. So Dogwood may have five or six teachers out of FMLA, and they're consuming, just between that time frame alone, estimated 100, 200 days. So if you look at, if you jump over to Houston High School, which I did too, extremes, actually I might have Houston done it, if I look at the cost analysis from Kelly's, I'm going to back some home. I'm going to give you information.
When a teacher's assistant is causing sick, do we bring in a sub to replace that?
You pay them at an hour rate.
Well, it depends, yeah, it depends on this. Sometimes they're.
Depends, if it's a one-on-one, they try to.
Like a special ed assistant versus just a regular teacher assistant? And do teachers assistants get 10 days of paid sick leave, or if they're sick, they don't get paid? Mr. Haddow?
Classified, classified.
Educational assistant.
If I'm a SPED assistant, for instance, and I take a day off, if that's a sick day, they get a, they get a sub at an hour rate, I think about $9.
But I, as the employee, took a sick day, I still get paid?
Yes.
And the reason I ask that question is I'm trying to get a feel for how big is this population is generating a half-million-dollar expense? And I'll just say.
I'll move you to Farmington last year, up in Delaware, and I'll give you the 454 people are out between that time period of August through January. Houston High School, 704. East Mill School, 377. Riverdale, 42. Total being 244. If you look at the cost of that, just so you get this, because I think this is literally total paid for substitute teachers, we did it on our own, we would have paid 250,000. So Kelly's, because of the up costs that they're making, that's an additional 75,000, 700,000 dollars. They actually project this out because, so it ends up to about 320,000. And talking to Kelly's and trying to figure out, hey, what is all this, what are his costs? What are you, what's the skin and game for you? And when you look at it, and this is from, so this is from the red, the criminal background check alone is $6,000. So let's say you're paying 70,000. Now, I think our cost is 40, I don't know who they're using for the criminal background check. So if you have, if you have 100 subs, the state taxes.
Not 6,000 a head, 6,000 for the pool.
No, 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 for, yeah, for the pool, yeah. So go with that.
Pretty thorough.
That's a great background check. I need to change that off. The taxes for that 100 is about 7,000. The unemployment, if you're paying 7,500, the unemployment loss, 5,400. But you're also paying for the liability, that worker's comp claim is huge.
Right.
So you're protecting.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing that we should go away from Kelly. That's not where I was headed with the question.
Yeah, okay. But the point being is, if I'm telling you something that you all want to know, then is Kelly's accorded them is saving us money.
Oh, sure, I'm sure that their salesman would feel that way.
Yeah, yeah, so you've got to take.
And that's a different analysis.
But the fill, the fill rate on Kelly's.
Yeah, and that's a whole different analysis. Should we do it ourselves, or should we pay Kelly to schedule subs for us? And I accept that there's a question there. Wasn't my question. I'm not on the train of, let's get rid of Kelly and do it ourselves.
I think it's the biggest expense, and you need to know what the very good analysis is.
When you said Houston, and you said with 700 subs or something, does that include ones that are out for district competitions and band competitions? So in that number, that is included?
So you have to figure.
So that's not a true number, who is out sick?
Right, and then you may have some misclassifications, because, hey, they're putting in ill, hey, you're sure you're ill, you're not really ill, and you're trying to decipher, and that's for your, to the best of your ability, you're trying to get invoiced money back from the school, which is all good, good and well.
My contention is that we have, intentionally or unintentionally, whether we created it or inherited it, and I think we inherited it, my point is that we have a culture that says, I've got 10 days of PTO, and I need to keep some of them in case I'm really sick, but I'm going to be out seven, eight, or nine days over the course of this year, whether I'm sick or I'm not. I'm going to be out seven, eight, or nine days over the course of the year. And what I'd really like for us as a leadership team to look for is, is there a way we can change that culture in a positive fashion? Not in a, not with a baseball bat standing at the door to whack somebody on the head if we think that they, we're taking a mental health day yesterday, but is there a way that we can make it fun to be here? Is there a way that we can make it fun to, is there a way we can remove the sucker effect? If you're a teacher with perfect attendance, are you a sucker? Because everybody else is taking every third Wednesday.
I think we should.
That's what I'm wanting us to look for, and we've been, I brought this up in the very first budget we ever did, when we came forward with a Kelly budget that said it's going to be 300 and something thousand dollars for substitute teacher cost. I got out my calculator and said, 300 and something teachers, 117 dollars per, my goodness, that's an average of eight days per teacher. And I don't have the data, but it sounds like we're in that seven, eight, nine days per teacher of sick leave.
Not clubs and so.
I don't think that's the case. Because, you know, we had to sign off, and Mr. J, and I did this at the school, she was my financial secretary. A lot of our teachers that we're dealing with are legitimate days, because if we think of the percentage, and I don't want to categorize, but the percentage of women that are teachers that are caregivers in our district, when their child is sick, or if they have older parents and their parents are sick, they're taking off for them. And I would say the number of teachers who are using all seven or eight of those days isn't as common as the ones who are missing two or three days a year. But I think you have some that are legitimately using all days for extended medical leaves. I think the data.
I have no issue, no issue with the teacher that is following policy and is away from school. I'm sick, my child's sick, the person, my mom or dad that I care for is sick. That, I'm glad we're able to provide that flexibility. I think that's part of the quality of life and the whole package of what it means to be a school teacher. I just think it's interesting, I'd like to see the data.
Right.
Because it seems to me like 80 or 90% of our teachers are sick eight or nine days. If I'm sick the 11th day, I don't get paid. And it would seem like just sheer variability and randomness would say, some people are going over, because I've got legitimate needs, they're keeping me at home, and other people are not sick very often at all. And the number of sick days that we have, that I think we have, the number of substitute days we're paying for liens and that, so I'll drop it and ask that, if nobody else is interested, maybe I can look at the data. But I'd like to see a histogram, if you will. What percentage of the teachers, what percentage of our teachers are missing, are utilizing seven or more sick days?
Right.
And I think Mr. Haddow is working on that now.
He is. And I think the benefit for us, we talked about this, having a thermometer, having a benchmark for the schools to say, if we hit this target, like we talked about, there's extra money for classroom supplies, or we're reinvesting that into the school.
And I'm 100% on board with whatever we do to encourage.
So we're looking, we're developing.
Putting that right back in the school to deliver the result.
But teachers also have the incentive to save those days, because those roll into retirement.
Yeah, I get that.
So I'm telling you, there was a conversation all the time with teachers, hey, I've got 130 days built up of my sick days. If you think 10 a year, I think.
You can actually bank some in case you do have something that happened during the year, right?
You can make a year's worth and retire early at the full pay, not the reduced pay for retirement. So there's a big incentive for teachers.
Not to miss days.
Not to miss those days and save them for retirement.
What I'm trying to do is identify who's really ill, classification trying, but one, two, is look at quarter by quarter by quarter by quarter, reward by quarter, because that's kind of a simple message, a more immediate message than at the end of the year. So that's two. Three is, there's one little thing, and I probably didn't even know, is what is a simple thing to identify good attendance, and you can debate it, is apparently, and I don't remember when, Shelby County Schools gave three personal days for people that had over 18 years of service, and they're trying to recognize that loyalty. And I was thinking to myself, wow, what happens if you said, hey, I'm going to give you an additional personal day for anyone who has more than 18 years, but there's an attendance piece, you had to miss less than five days the year before to get that personal day. And that's just like a quick hitter. Or you go into, hey, your overall performance, if it's a four or five, and you have school overall growth gains, and you have less than five days out, you get this, which is a little bit broader. But that, I think that's part of the earlier discussion of, hey, how do you reward? But that, I think that's part of the earlier discussion of, hey, how do you reward employee performance with attendance being a variable of that, of that performance?
Could be, could be. And as, I know I said I would quit, but I'll give you two data points that help shape my opinion at this stage. One, we had a comment about a year ago at this time, that we need to pass this budget amendment to increase the substitute budget, because we're coming into the springtime, when we see a lot more absences. So, that, that, that sounds like I'm out voluntarily, as opposed to something unexpected happened. And then the other one's much more personal, where one of my children had a teacher last year that missed four Wednesdays, was out sick, four Wednesdays interrupt. That's not a random occurrence of being ill, that's, I'm taking days off. So, I appreciate that I may not have the right perspective of how widespread this is. So let's, let's look at that, and we said we are. So, thank you, I'm, I'm excited about that.
Because I would say, we, we do have those situations where it's not used-
And, and I'm after a culture, not, not a rulebook, but a culture.
I was gonna ask real quick, summer school? Where do those fund? Yeah, what, is that kind of, okay, so it's not coming in separately in the revenues, it's coming in too?
That's coming into the school level, summer school?
The school level?
Totally funds around summer school.
Okay. And they keep all the revenue? Well, the reason I was asking, because I know they wanted an additional person in the summer, and usually it was paid from, from the revenue from summer school. So that's what was, why I was questioning where the money was going this year.
Do we have an update, alternative school, I know you and I talked, I guess it was yesterday, it seemed so long ago? I mean, are, are we gonna provide alternative school services for Cogeville, are we not? Is it still being worked through?
They are not committing 100% that they are all in alternative school. I spoke with Mr. Atkins today. I do think they are really leaning towards us continuing to provide alternative school for them.
So you guys are still working it through?
They will know, they will know, I hope by next week, is when they're supposed to find out, so.
I would really, really, really encourage you to, I, I get where we are this year, and we want them to use it for the revenue, but I would really, really encourage you, as soon as you get past that point, to set the-
The date for next year?
For next year, so you have to commit by this day, and I really don't care whether you're in or you're out, just tell me by this day.
Agreed.
Can I ask about the math consumables?
Yes, oh yeah.
I, I was looking for it in this bridge, somewhere I thought I had seen a number about the math consumables being order of magnitude 400 grand, but I'm not finding where I thought I had seen that.
It's actually net between the consumables and the textbooks sold, this price.
So, Eureka math consumables are about 140,000 per year. Springboard, which is at the middle school levels, about 105,000. Foreign language workbooks, about 12,000. Expeditionary learning, which is reading, possibly 60,000, for a total of 321. And that fund is also the teacher discretionary fund, which is $300 per teacher from using the classrooms. And then we have two online programs that face knows looking to put in, so that's that total number, 400,000. I just shoved it all under Eureka, because I thought they were my notes, so when you saw it, you just saw it. So that's not the cost of Eureka.
But Eureka's 140? You have a feel for what that is per kid?
It comes out right about the same. It comes out right about the same.
Comes out to be about one-fifth the cost of a textbook? Eureka is K8 or 18?
It's K5.
K5. And that's springboard?
Springboard is 68.
And that's math also? So it's really six to seven and a half? What presume, less than half, my kids take algebra, I've heard of them? The springboard doesn't apply to algebra students, right?
Correct, yes.
But the Eureka math, that 140 would be K5?
K5. And it realistically might not be that much, that may include the teacher materials, just going off what we had as far as last year. The other possibility is that the teachers won't take all parts of it, because it's broken up into many different sections, so they took a year to kind of go through, so I don't have their exact order, I'm giving you a very high number. If that makes sense, I'm giving the most it could be, it can only go down.
All right, I'll touch base with her after we're done here.
Sure.
One quick question, is standard contracts, I just want to make sure I understand, before we got money from the state, and as of this past, or this current school year, they have stopped doing that? And so, but we're, so we're taking money out of our budget to continue doing extended contracts?
Yeah, their, their explanation was they put it in the BEP funds. Instead of holding out separate, they just, we don't know that we saw that addition, but this is something very important to our high school, they specifically asked for specific programs to remain intact, and those teachers are meeting students' needs.
Thank you.
So I had a question on the capital outlay budget, page 39. So I think we kind of, we're talking yesterday, and just had asked about, all right, what's in these numbers?
In which numbers?
So there's a $50,000 in architect fees, 445,000 in building improvements, 40,000 site development, and then other capital outlays, 570, 756.
And I'm not sure, you're curious about the other capital outlay?
Well, just all of them, I think, I've kind of asked, just breaking down, so what are we spending on what? And if the answer is, well, we're gonna assess our needs through the year, okay, but what, I mean, I know one of the things we're doing is putting a new roof on Dogwood, is that in these numbers, is it not in these numbers? It's gonna come from the bond offering, and how's that gonna flow through? The other one is air conditioners for Dogwood, I guess we're doing, is on this year's budget, right? So that won't hit this year's.
And you'll see that in a separate capital improvement on budget?
Yes, I mean, it's just a million dollars, and I'm curious as to what? And, and other capital outlays, an increase of 400, almost 500,000, so I'm just curious as to what's-
That's the relocation and the lease of portables, and the debt paid to the city, the principal interest for Riverdale construction.
The other capital outlays is?
Yes, sir.
What is this area where you were saying you were gonna move to, help fund money to, it would be in this?
It would be in this category.
The city is case 280 or something? 220, 221. Which is about 60,000 less than we were talking when we first started talking.
Yes, sir.
Cool.
Uh, there's some dollars budgeted for general repairs, pavement, and I think the rest are just-
excess funds that we'll utilize if we have-
To go down our list of-
The smaller projects that we can-
The smaller projects, so an example that, we were meeting with the Riverdale, we haven't awarded the bid yet, but the, the lowest bidding contractor, it's the pre-construction, it was the pre-preconstruction meeting to talk about logistics. So an example of something that we would want to do for this, we have a difficult decision to make about parking. As they start to build this facility in front of the, the school, it's going to drastically limit the parking. And so we have to provide either something temporary, so the field that's behind Riverdale Elementary, either we were talking about having to put down gravel or some peething to do that, or we know that we have future plans, that once the portables are out, we have to put a road back behind the school for fire truck access, because of the new requirements. And also, they've always had parking issues at Riverdale, so the decision that we were talking about today, for example, would be, do we go ahead and, the cost of that gravel, and putting all that down, is estimated, could be $50,000 for that size of gravel lot? Do you put that towards a paving project that would be part of this, this funding, or pay for something temporary? So that's the type of project that we are looking at, not a, one of the bigger-
Right, and there's a lot of 20, 30, and 40,000 initiatives that don't make their way into the five-year capital plan. The five-year capital plan is pretty much the 200 and 300, up to the million dollar projects that we have on our horizon.
Right, and any, and you know, anything that's over 100,000, we have to bring to the board for approval.
And one of those projects that looks really nice is the guidance office at Houston High.
Correct.
Very nice.
It's done?
It's beautiful.
Very nice. So it's great that we can tackle the small projects.
So I don't think it's broken down, if you wanted to know.
I said a lot of things tonight, I haven't echoed Ms. Fisher, I guess, in just expressing gratitude to the entire team, and in particular Superintendent Mr. Jones, for an excellent job on putting together the budget. So nice to have such a smooth process this year.
I agree, it's a good job.
That's a good, that's a good input.
One more, one more question, cafeteria, just, just so we can sort of understand, with Airmark coming in, and how we're gonna-
So we're optimists, we have seen drastic increases in our sales, so sales have been up. I think one of the issues that they had coming in was they were basing projections in their staffing on the reimbursements that were proposed, and I think the numbers weren't all right from the previous cafeteria management. So they have a very firm grip on the numbers now, and their staffing, and they've made changes to what they're doing, they're looking at their production. And you know, they have the clause in their contract that if they don't hit a benchmark for us, they refund all of their fees. So an example is, they won't hit their benchmark for this semester, we will be receiving $58,000 from them, that'll go into this cafeteria fund. When you look at cafeteria fund too, there were also a lot of things that had to be fixed, ovens that weren't working, so I know, like at Dogwood, for example, they had to buy a new combi oven, I think y'all saw that budget amendment that came through. So there were some facility needs that had to be addressed too. They are guaranteeing next year for us a $17,000 profit, which means if they don't hit that mark for us, they have $70,000 worth of fees that they will then not take.
Oh, is it, no, go ahead.
Something I had never thought of until you just said that, when we get the Airmark bill, is that the full bill? And so, to the extent that they didn't hit the target, there is actually an end-of-the-year rebate?
Right, when you see the March financials, I'm gonna accrue that, because we've hit it, so I'm gonna accrue a receivable due from now on, about $58,000.
So the run rate I've been looking at in the cafeteria fund is a little bit overstated in terms of the loss, we'll get a little bit of offset on that. Oh, well, that's good news. And since I already had the floor, the other question, I know the answer to this question, does Airmark understand that the, we don't declare success until this fund breaks even on its own account?
Yes.
But, that, my next question is, even though it says 17,000, that does not include this next year of our 65,000 for shared services and our repairs, correct?
That's correct.
And as of this morning, we're looking-
17,000 loss is what they're getting, 17,000 profit.
So the fund, best case, the fund would be 60 or so, 50 or 60,000 dollars.
But it's not including this next year, the 65, or the repairs that we have, which-
But this upcoming year is the last year for the shared services.
Correct.
And maybe we can look at too, and I think we talked about this, is down, down the road, have a plan for replacing all the older equipment in the, in the kitchens, you know, have a plan?
As we're looking at fixed assets, looking at the age of the kitchen equipment, trying to put together a refrigerator plant.
Expensive, well, but you could be, you could be paying a pretty significant energy penalty too, depending on how well that stuff's running.
Right.
So you, I think you told me yesterday that Airmark was guaranteeing a $17,000 profit next year. And so, the, the amount in the budget here for transfers out is 243. Is that going to other things, or is that other expenses that don't fall within nutrition?
That is just for cafeteria now, so we're expecting that number to drop.
Okay, so this could be an area where you see-
So Linda's point, if it came in just like forecasted, that would, instead of 240, that would be 65.
Correct.
Plus, well, that's shared services.
17 minus the shared services, minus maintenance, so 70.
Right.
The 243 would be about 70 in transfers, if it happens the way Airmark says.
And they, they feel very confident, because they, they, you know, they didn't have a full implementation, they really didn't hit it till after Christmas, they're using old staff, our old staffing model, so really, you know, this year when they looked at their sales, they looked at their production, they've changed their staffing formula, so they really can control their costs based on their sales.
So Mr. Jones, if we did have 120,000 in the cafeteria fund that budgeted for transfers that we didn't wind up needing, what would be required for the staff to spend that on some other priority?
Well, we could address it now, or do a, you know, we could just do a budget amendment.
We'd have to do a budget amendment.
So it's not really possible to repurpose that money without a budget amendment?
Correct.
Not this one, no.
Is that part of what you were asking?
Well, I was just trying to understand.
Trying to fine tune the number.
Yeah.
So for us, it's just like a reserve.
I'm happy to have that student account, because we can't spend it, so.
And we, we aren't through the end of the year yet, I mean, what if a major, you know, something major goes?
Good.
And, and I've, I've heard a lot of good things about the cafeteria, in terms of, I think, demand is up, so we're seeing more people buying lunches, I know my kids have said good things.
But we're not home, but we're definitely on the right trajectory. What are you hearing from around the suburbs?
As far as their cafeteria-
Weren't there some other people that were underwater, just like we are?
Oh, yes, yes, they were.
Nobody was as bad in underwater as we are?
They all are, and they're looking at their issues with reimbursements, their issues with the software program that was being used, our point-of-sale system, that we are changing next year. So there are other, I don't think that's me.
It is me.
Okay, so if we change point-of-sale system, does that mean parents need to make sure that we emptied it out?
No, it wouldn't.
Or will the money move?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't move.
Okay, good to know.
Yes.
That might be-
It'd be part of the conversion.
Okay, good, no, that's good for folks to know, okay.
The challenge we've had, and I know Ms. Pfizer can tell you this personally, that you check one register and you see a, a different balance from another register, so there were accounting issues.
Any other questions?
Did have one other question, so. We got this document here, that says draft number two, how is this different than what was sent to us and posted online?
This is what was posted online.
This is posted?
The differences were, I think that-
Draft number one.
So I'm thinking our location's different.
Transportation was number one.
From draft number one.
So this is what was sent to us, then?
Yes, yes.
And this is the change?
Yeah, this was the first send to you, that's why we're making sure we're sending draft number one.
That's cool, to have the date on draft number two.
Yeah, no, that's good.
So you know which draft it is.
So.
Yeah, we talked about that in our meeting.
I guess my, my question's even more pertinent, what are the differences between these two documents?
So we looked at our transportation.
The transportation cost, you showed us that, so is that the only difference? Okay, what else do we?
That was pretty much it.
Just the transportation, is that the only, no, okay.
So that's the-
That's the only difference?
That's the transportation, that's the line I know. Okay.
I'll write it up somewhere now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? We're taking away from this that for the years 1917, 18, we're gonna look at optimum class size, comprehensive salary review package, and early out for PLC.
I don't know that it's exactly budgeted, but at the same time, we're gonna talk about a couple of different visions of how we're gonna use the new 12 new plans.
Correct, yes.
And we have a big, big meeting at the end of the month? We've got the, the Riverdale bid, we've got the site work, is site work gonna be, are we approving a bid for site work for the portables, now?
I'd have to look, I think so. He's, he's been working with the architects right now.
And we're approving the budget. And we're approving the budget.
And approving the budget.
So our meeting's Monday, right?
Monday.
Monday.
Let me ask, so as, as far as the budget, do you, do you need extra time at, at the meeting?
Me personally, the opportunity to come up and sit with Mr. Jones for a couple of hours made all the difference in the world in terms of getting questions answered. Believe it or not, this, this was almost no questions for me tonight. So no, I'm ready to vote on the budget, but you are, there's a, some, you're gonna have to feather in the.
Yeah, I was gonna mention a couple of things. We're gonna bring in.
Healthcare money.
Yeah, right. I'll have to make that adjustment on the health insurance premiums. We'll shift the FTE from special ed to regular ed for the, possibly the English teacher at Houston High.
So it'd be budgeted for it, wasn't it?
Right.
It's a growth position.
And then we're gonna have some additional dollars in the revenue area for tuition, a little over 20,000. The transportation alley at Collierville, 20,000. And then I believe Mr. Manuel wanted to mention the fellows program.
So we're looking at, one of our professional development areas is, we are concerned that we're gonna have to start growing our leaders from inside of our district. The ability to get assistant principals and principals from outside the district is gonna be limited because we're shutting the door for OPEB, we're shutting the door for different positions, so teachers should get.
We don't really wanna do that anymore.
Right. So this is a partnership that, that we're proposing for professional development with University of Memphis, where we would actually, just like you're talking about, a pipeline. Form a committee with our administrators in our schools, and our teachers in our schools, and select two teachers a year that we are putting through a fellows program at University of Memphis. Gets them their administration certification, it is on-the-job job shadowing, and really we're targeting those future leaders for the district. So that's one of our programs.
And then one more small adjustment, about $5,900 for some additional workdays for attendance, secretaries and clerical assistants.
For them to come in a couple of weeks earlier to get all the information in?
I think a couple of days.
Couple of days?
That was on the sheet of priorities.
So just two days?
The program you're talking about, what, how much does that cost?
It would cost, I think it's 24,000 per person that we put into the program.
Is it a one-year program?
Mm-hmm. It's a full year.
And they get their edge and put you at a 10.
I wouldn't do any more than two.
So the swings.
And it may be two every, this may not be, it's not something I would recommend every year, maybe it's something that we're doing every.
So you have 13 APs?
The other minor topic is that some of the principals requested that his APs, some of them go to 11 months instead of 10 and a half months. And I don't know how much time they, you wanna give on that, if you're talking maybe an additional $5,000, that's what I'm gonna bring it up.
5,000 per person or total?
Probably total. Because you're talking about half, two weeks, two weeks salary, whatever that is.
If you think that's the right thing to do, then I'm okay with 5,000 total.
Is it in the budget already?
No, it's not in the budget already, but it was, I feel like bringing it up. Because he wants the autonomy, he wants the autonomy to use assistant principals over the summer for, for training and development.
This is one of the principals wants to use his two APs.
Well, he's already got one that's 11 months, and he wants to use the other two for.
So that narrows down who we're talking about.
And they, they do, they do have them come in. They do have them come in.
But once that, once that trickles out, you may have, you may have some kickbacks and hey, Dan, we want that same option.
Yeah. Once we do it for him.
But other assistant principals really don't wanna work on it. So it's really, there's two people giving you.
And really what is, you have, you have summer school in the building.
Yeah.
And so they do like to have someone there for discipline.
Right. And so the cool thing about it only being 5,000 is it's a really small number, so it's easy to say yes.
You guys may have the wrong spot.
Oh.
And then when you have 20 of those, it's Riverdale.
Riverdale? Oh, I've seen this in high school.
Yes, Riverdale.
Yes, Riverdale. Oh, I'm sorry.
On the other hand, I, I have always loved the idea of principals having autonomy. So if there was a way to, to create discretionary money, and I know they already have some, but if there was a way to create discretionary money for the principal, then use it however he wants. If this is the best way to use the money, then use it that way, would be my, but I'm a little, I'm a little uneasy about saying this school gets treated differently than the other three primary schools.
Yeah, again, I, I leaned into that with autonomy.
I agree.
Do we have money set aside for principals to have the autonomy to do some additional faculty?
So if, if you wanna come back and say, I'd like to add $20,000 to the budget for principal discretion, or 22, and it's split up proportionally?
You would feel more comfortable.
As long as you thought that was a good idea, I think I'd be on board with it.
You could say 15,000, 3,000 per school, make it work. Discretionary over, over the summer.
But I like giving the principals flexibility, autonomy, and tying it back to, but there are trade-offs.
Right.
You know, there's not, we don't own a money tree.
We could put it into their money that we give each school allotment, and we could build it into that. And so if they chose to use it on professional development, or they chose to use it on your assistant principals.
You wanna add 12 grand to that across the district, or 15 grand to that across the district, I personally would be solidly on board with that.
And like I said, if they can use it for PD, they may.
Decide to send some money to the PLC Institute or, you know.
So the, the program that you're talking about, you said 24,000 per person.
Per person.
Are we gonna budget 24,000 next year or 50,000?
I would, I would recommend to the first year, so they'll be going on trips together. They'll have a partner to go through.
So it might be an every other year kinda thing?
Yes, good. Because we were talking about how many.
Do you have any sense of the tenure for APs? As long as they don't get hired away to be director of student services somewhere?
No, the ones that have been with us have only had one new one. Two, two, well, two.
Well, we, we had a growth position at the very beginning, when we were born, and then we've replaced one since we've been in the district. But 13 people.
Will have another.
You know, 13 years is a long time to be the AP. You gotta figure that you're gonna be replacing at least, at least one a year. Do you have any that are close to retirement?
Yes.
We're replacing one this year.
So we're replacing one this year. Yeah. One a year sounds a, a little lean, like 1.2 or 1.3 a year that we would expect to replace. But just 'cause you go through this fellows program doesn't mean you're gonna wind up being an AP for us.
Right. And then also, a lot of the districts are also tying a contract to this, that once we put you through this program, essentially you can't leave our district and go somewhere else and take your time with you.
Or reimburse us for the cost of the program.
That's correct.
And they're building that into that. And I would ask you to think about putting, having them put some skin in the game. So if it's 24 a year, maybe the district covers a percentage, not the whole amount, or maybe you get, you get your part back over a period of years as opposed to it costs you nothing to do with.
I got you.
So that you're investing more than just your time in that additional degree. Because the typical process is I go pay for it, right? You have a master's. Somebody pay for your master's or did you have to pay for it?
But it's not, it's not a, it's not a master's, it is just the administration certification.
But it's the equivalent. It's a certi, certification that's gonna.
I think having some skin in the game is probably good, although you don't wanna make